Dr. Ted, do we have any introductions to be made tonight?
Yes, so let's, I want to introduce Suzanne Weatherly, who is the LSC, University Park Faculty Senate VP. She's sitting in for Dave and right there. And Jenny, is Jenny here? Yeah, oh, that's you, right there. Jenny Chiotti, how do you say your last name? Chiotti?
Chiotti.
Chiotti, okay. Jenny's here, representing Kingwood. She's, she's the Senate VP, we're sitting in for Roger Chambers tonight, so thank you. And this will be Rebecca Royer's last meeting. Rebecca's right there. She's representing, of course, she's the Faculty Senate over at SciFair, and you're going to talk tonight, right? Okay, which is why you're sitting there. And let's see, we have Andrew Christman from Community Impact. Where's Andrew? Right there. Thank you, glad to have you. And we have Jim Kane tonight, from the former superintendent from Klein. So Jim, thank you. I'd like for Katie Caruso to come up. And Katie's going to introduce the 2019-2020 sabbatical recipients. And we want to take a, we want to take a picture after she's introduced. Do you want to give a little background about the sabbatical?
Sure, sure. So each year, Lone Star College supports faculty and staff who've served for at least seven years continuously at full time with semester-length sabbaticals. And these sabbaticals are chosen by a system-wide committee. And they're chosen for their potential for professional growth, and that may be for study, for research, for developing, improving skills, maintaining currency in the film, excuse me, in the field, individual renewal, and also for the potential return of that work to come back to Lone Star. And you'll hear in a lot of the proposals tonight, part of the effort is to share what was developed with other faculty and staff. And so as I read the names tonight, if we could have people who are not here with us to stand as I read your name and introduce your work for your sabbatical. So Dr. Casey Bass, Professor of English from Lone Star College SciFair, will research methods of incorporating student leadership in English 1301 and 1302 to enhance student engagement, especially for those who are at risk for non-completion. And now we have Robert Bradhears, Professor of Biology from Lone Star College Montgomery.
Katie, do you want them to stand up when you introduce them?
Yes, yes. So if you'll, if you'll please stand up as I call your names. Casey's here? I don't think they're here, so. It's not here, okay. So if I, as I'm reading your name, if you could stand up and we can recognize you, please? We don't know exactly which ones will be here today. So we have Professor of English Douglas Boyd from Lone Star College Tomball. Yay, we have someone who's here, yes. And Professor Boyd will research and develop assignments and strategies for assessing teamwork and personal responsibility core objectives, and report these results to the coordinating board in 2022.
Katie, go to the next.
Yes, thank you. And Professor John Detloff, I do not believe he is here tonight. Professor of English at Lone Star College Kingwood, he is going to create an OER-based composition and rhetoric two master course and share it with other faculty at Kingwood and across the system. Dr. Carolyn Ho, whom I believe had a conflict tonight as well, our Professor of ESAL at Lone Star College SciFair, will conduct a study of common mistakes in ESAL student writing. And the project will help identify the most common writing mistakes so she can produce digital learning modules for other ESAL teachers and students. Dr. Roscoe Johnson, Professor of English from SciFair, will produce an academic textbook for English using the CLT model of instruction and creating a D2L sandbox module. Dr. Abraham Cora, our Professor in Referenceology. I'm getting clapped into here, thank you so much. And we're very excited to say that he will be studying the impact of undergraduate research in the social sciences and humanities on students in the institution. And we've definitely enjoyed working with Dr. Cora. Dr. Maria Carmen Marin, is she here? Professor of English from Tomball? She will collect poems and seek a publisher for a chapbook on depression, and then bring her increased understanding of the craft and these mental health issues back to the classroom. Sean Miller, Professor of Accounting from SciFair. Professor Miller will investigate accounting students, specifically what supports or hinders their success in the business program, and how these factors impact their experience here at Lone Star College. Dr. Todd Miller, Professor of Music from Kingwood. Professor Miller will examine the use of music to get greater understanding of diverse population and experiences through study abroad, musical performance, and healing in tragedy. Kay Nguyen, Professor of Art, LSC North Harris. Professor Nguyen, Professor Nguyen will create a new body of work and document the technical processes of these works and of her art to use as teaching materials at Lone Star College North Harris. Dr. Stephen Pruitt, Professor of History at Tomball. So Dr. Pruitt will research the impact of military bases on local public schools to fill a gap in the historical literature concerning racial integration in public schools near military bases. Professor David Putz. Professor Putz will work to research, develop, and offer a four-point-part professional development workshop series specifically targeting faculty in their middle years. Workshop curriculum will address ways to wake up tired teaching and identify opportunities for faculty to remain engaged during their middle years in the college. And Dr. Rahula, Professor of English, LSC Montgomery. Not here with us tonight. He will research what hampers student success in developmental and freshman English classes and work to create innovative steps to prevent students from quitting their classes. Professor Brian Reeves, Professor of Developmental English at University Park. Professor Reeves will research and develop a theory-based online English 1301 prerequisite course to implement in spring of 2020. Professor Michelle Ritchie, Sociology, Lone Star College Montgomery, will develop a podcast series on civic engagement and work to develop supplemental materials for other faculty to use. Professor Kyle Solak, Professor of English, LSC Tomball. So Professor Colak will visit virtual So Professor Colak will visit virtual teaching centers in surrounding universities and colleges and will investigate emerging AR and VR technologies and their potential employment in classroom, online, or traditional. Dr. Rebecca Tate, Professor of English from LSC Tomball. Dr. Tate will conduct research to develop a focused collection of African-American literature, historical and cultural resources to use in her English composition and corequisite classes. Dr. Matt Turner, Professor of English, LSC Cyfair. Dr. Turner will investigate multimodal writing in order to implement it into the campus and online composition courses. And these courses will be taught for the first time in the spring of 2020. And then we have Dr. Mark Witten, Professor of Philosophy, LSC Montgomery. Dr. Witten will compile, edit, research, and write a textbook, a handbook for Introduction to Philosophy. And now we'd like to get a photo, but before I do, I want to say a thank you to the sabbatical committee, our Chair, Brian Kaiser, and also Dr. Joanna Shaw, who helped with logistics, as well as the folks you see before you who all spent time reviewing these excellent proposals so that we could announce these recipients tonight. So if we could get our sabbatical winners to come to the front, and I think the instructions are to kind of split into two groups on either side, and if the board members could kind of merge in the middle, we can get everyone in the photo. Is that what you said? Okay. Okay, so you guys want to leave a gap in the middle for the board?
Okay, that was very, very awesome. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the March 7, 2019 workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I go have a motion, please? It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of March 17, 2019. Any unreadiness? Questions? If not, all of those in favor vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Dr. Head, do we have any special reports or announcements?
Yeah, a couple of updates and announcements. Let me just start. First of all, I'd like to recognize Mario Castillo, and I know he doesn't want us to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. He received, last week, I believe, he was in Albuquerque to receive an award. He was recognized by the Hispanic National Bar Association. He's one of the top lawyers under 40, so major.
Mario, you need to stand and wave in case people don't know you.
I promised him no speeches. He didn't have to make any speeches. He didn't want to do it. I made him, I made him give me the information today.
Okay. I apologize for breaking protocol.
I also have some, we received an official letter today that LSC Houston North has officially been accredited, so. So Quentin Ride, and there are a lot of people working on this, but Quentin and Dwight, thank you, and the staff. So there's a lot of work that goes into this. And so the Faculty Senate, I did not have the official letter. I told them that I thought I was waiting on it any day, and I got back and they gave me the official letter, so. That allows us, we had received an unofficial note earlier this week. And so when you see the schedule, it will have the first Houston North classes in it. And I just didn't know, because they tell us not to move ahead until we get official notification, but we now have official notification, so. And the other part I wanted to bring you up to speed on is we've been spending quite a bit of time at the legislature. And I appreciate the Presidents and the Vice Chancellors taking care of their business. I know I owe a couple of you an email response, Shaw. I know I do. I'm not ignoring you, it just goes from morning to night up there. Then, so a couple of things are going on. One is our primary, the primary focus that we had was receiving money from the state, 15, or 15, we asked for 15 million for hurricane relief. So far, the House has approved 13.1, and the Senate Work Group, Senate Finance Work Group has approved 13.1 million. So we think that's going to go through. We've made contact with the Governor's Office, and Jesse, Jesse and I were up, they've been up there a lot, and Dr. Smith joined us. So we've been in touch with the Governor's Office, Trustees OMA, to make sure that it, I think it's going to happen, but it's not over till it's over. So again, we had more damage than all the other community colleges put together. We had over $40 million in damage. And you're going to give a quick update on FEMA again? We, not much progress on FEMA, but I'll let her talk about that. So the other thing we're working on is general appropriations for community colleges. And you know, the legislature has been focused on school finance more than anything else. And so the House has approved their budget. And the issues that we're having, the, because of the hurricane, our enrollments, we still went, they're off, our contact hours went up over the biennium, and that's the way they take a look at things. So we're still trying to see what the final appropriation will be. And Presidents' all update you probably over the weekend and some kind of update. We had, we're working on a couple of other things. We're really close to getting approval for the Life Path Program that, you remember, Dr. Hulsey, we went to the meeting a couple of years ago, and Dr. Hulsey came back, and then Leann Nutt, and now Rebecca Riley have been involved in that project. That's for students with cognitive learning disabilities, or cognitive disability, cognitive learning disability, yeah. So I, I am pretty certain that there, the, we need legislative approval for an associate degree, and I think we're going to get that. Really, we're really close on that. So thank you, Leann and Rebecca, for your input. And our representatives have been terrific. At the end of the day, I'll give you, not, not today, but tonight, Oliverson, though, has been really helpful with this. We've got some really good representatives helping us with a lot of different things. And Brandon Creighton, as though you know, is the head of Higher Ed, Senate Higher Ed, so he's been very helpful, so. Another couple of, Representative Bell has asked us to work with them on an emergency management program, so we're really close to getting that. It'll, we'll have a hearing, we think, next week over that. And we have another one over annexation. There's a general problem across the state. If you're in the service area of somebody, you can't get out from underneath them unless they let you. And so we've had some ISDs that would like to join with us, but they have to be free of the other community colleges. In other words, they're not paying taxes to them, but the college is not providing any, any services to them. So they would like to join us, but to get out of that service area, we have to have special legislation for that. So Senator Creighton is pushing on that one also. We, another positive is the aviation program is moving along that the Board approved back in, what, a couple of months ago? And you had, how many people showed up for your? So there's quite a bit of interest in that. I didn't tell you this, but this week when I was in Austin, the, they had a newscast on in the Austin talking about the pilot shortage. And they featured community colleges as a way to address the, they, they featured Fox Valley Technical Institute, but, and then the President of Sam Houston called me today and wants to partner with us on the second, on the second side of that so that they can offer bachelor's degrees with that. And they want to talk about air traffic controllers. So there's a lot of good things going on. We should receive, I'm hoping, some information on the bachelor's degrees. I was told that, I'm not going to check my email here, but I was told that we would be receiving something maybe tomorrow about that. It's going to happen, I just, the timing on it's, I think the first one would be BSN and BAS, Bachelor of Applied Science. And then we just submitted the Bachelor of Applied Technology. So there's a lot of good things going on, so. That's all I have.
Yeah, may I add something?
You're the Chair, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. He talked about Mario being modest, not wanting recognition. He falls in the same category, and Jesse can attest to this. I don't remember now, I get my days and nights mixed up, whether it was Tuesday or Wednesday, but he had to testify to this huge committee in Austin of senators, state senators. And before he spoke, most of those senators were carrying on side conversations while the other people were presenting. Steve walks up to the mic, and all of a sudden, folks went, he startled them with, with facts, data about things that we need here at Lone Star. And even my friend Royce West from Dallas stopped his side conversation to listen. And near the end, he had pretty good questions for you, didn't he? So I want to compliment the Chancellor on the type of work and the type of reputation that he has, not only with our elected officials, but all of our stakeholders. And I think that's one of the things that has helped Lone Star stay on the top of the totem pole. And it will continue to cause us to move the pendulum a little bit further each year. We are kind of the model of community colleges as far as Texas is concerned and probably around the nation. I didn't embarrass you, did I?
They were nice to me because I'm friends with the Chair. And so they can't get anything done without the Chair, but thank you.
But it was great. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Chancellor?
No.
Okay. Dr. Arlo, are you ready? Thank you.
I really like this thing. Chairman Smith, distinguished board members, Chancellor Head, good evening. I have the honor of presenting on behalf of my colleagues tonight. And April is Community College Month. So what a better way to, to celebrate, you know, to receive the accreditation for our Houston North campus. So it's a great month to, to celebrate that. And also, I would like to celebrate by celebrating our faculty. As faculty are the heartbeat of any community college, so I would like to mention a little bit about what our faculty are doing. So only four categories that I will present tonight. I would like to thank my colleagues for providing the information. I'd like to thank Helen and team to put together this nice fancy PowerPoint framework, so I get a chance to try it out tonight.
You shouldn't have said that. I thought you had used our new thing. I was going to thank you afterwards for using the right.
As you know, we, we had an opportunity to refresh our cultural beliefs and talking about the one LSC. Tonight, everything that you will hear, if I say "we," that means all colleges. If I say "faculty," that means faculty from all colleges. We are one LSE. And I tried to hide, there will be no college logos or anything throughout the presentation. If you see one, please let me know. So here it is, talking about the category of technology. Our faculty are implementing and integrating the latest technology in the country or probably in the world in the classroom. Our robots are being used to teach programming, 3D printing all over the campuses throughout Lone Star College Universe, I mean Lone Star College. Drones are being used at colleges in classes for, for programming and also to teach AFA for, to get ready for pilots and everybody else. Artificial intelligence are being used in different categories that, that again, that helps even with online education and face-to-face. In fact, the, our D2L program, the course management system has something, a process that is called intelligence. That means it will automatically look, if students are not submitting their homeworks, if students are not doing what they need to do, the system automatically contacts them. If they miss two quizzes, the system will refer them to the faculty. So faculty are using technology in the fullest. Ritual Reality is, is being used all over the Lone Star College, from geography to history to biology. What you see down here is a dissection table that, that students are working on. And of course, there'll be no smell, but it takes a lot of things that are happening today in, across the country at the greatest healthcare facilities. Talking about course design, what our faculty have done, they're using the courses that they have been teaching but align them more with the current trends and the jobs that are required without lowering the academic rigor, rigor. But they, they changed the course in a way that they had 100% passage rate this time. But also, they're learning the newest, that when they go out to industry, they know exactly what's going on. Math has been a challenge for everybody across the country, but our faculty are taking, not look at one course in the lab, they're looking at three courses together to see what can they do for our students that they're going to be prepared from the education course that they get from the corequisite and prerequisite. They're looking at it as a whole and trying the latest technologies and latest approaches in teaching and learning so our students can do better. Reacting to the past, our faculty are using and putting students in the shoes of historic figures in the past, and they ask them to make decisions, what they would do if something like this happened. So again, it makes students to think and put themselves that, how they make a decision that makes differences in the history. Of course, it's mostly all play in the classroom. But again, it makes them do a lot of critical thinking. Our government faculties are using podcasts in their classes to bring in the civil court, Supreme Court cases to the classroom to talk about any events that are relevant that's going on in the, in the country right now. They take it to the class and again, help our students learn even better. Lone Star College has one of the, one-of-a-kind manufacturing lines in the country that people are coming to visit from all over the country, but is being used to, to teach students on manufacturing and also automation. Student projects, this is again, students. For community college to be great in research, you saw again, it's so appropriate to, to hear all these faculty that are going out there and doing research and come back and take it to the classroom. So from the oldest African-American community in Houston to the, to NASA and all the way to the space, our students are involved and engaged. The picture that you see at the very top is that our students that are working on a museum-owned facility. And when, by the time they're done and do some exification, they can get a Level 1 certificate. They can get higher just with that certificate. If not, they put it as a service learning on their resumes and they get picked up by a lot of universities. Biomedical research, as far as in Parkinson's and leukemia, happening on several colleges right now, right here at Lone Star College. And again, you talk about algae is strong and, and being flown to the space to check the impacts of what algae does. And also, they do some changes in, in the DNA research also on Lone Star College's. We have faculty that come out of industry. These are faculty that have run chemical labs and refineries right here, and now they're using, and they're getting their students involved in doing analysis for them. So there is research at many different levels, at different disciplines. Well, the picture at the top looks a little bit scary, but the name, Muscles, Kings, and Queens came from students. from students. Faculty are using, in, in introduction to A and P is very important for people to learn how and where these muscles are in the body and which one comes first, how they're placed. So, this faculty is, is working with their students that they painted on themselves, so they can see it and they can realize and, and know exactly how these muscles are placed. ESOL is for speakers of other languages. These are great people with a lot of talent that they come to, to our colleges, and the, the faculty are putting many, many different events together that now they can close out the bridges that there are, but also, they can use this, this individuals. Again, there will be piano, there will be food, there is a lot of cultural events that happen on different colleges, again, led by faculty. Second, life of books, appreciation to art, uses books in a very different way. The one you see at the bottom is that students take a old book and they cut it into a piece of art. Of course, probably accreditation companies do not appreciate that very much, organizations, but, but again, this is a lot of things going on that creativity is happening in every class. The Hunger Banquet, I wanted to mention that, as you know, the civic engagement is important. Lone Star College has invested a lot in it, and the faculty that we have, they're, they're focused on the whole student, and also, they're creating the, the future global citizens. So, many activities as far as Hunger Banquet is, is going on, on the campuses. Thank you very much for your time. Did I pass through?
Can you talk about the conference?
Okay.
The Innovation Conference?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I didn't want to get in trouble with Helen, so I finished and settled and so forth.
I know, that's the reason I asked you to go ahead and stay there.
Yes, sir. It was a pleasure. Again, thank you very much for all you do in Austin for us, so at least I know the presidents appreciate and, and understand. But it was a good day. Trustee Lloyd was participating like every other year. And the subject of the, the topic was the appreciation from the mayor to the president of Rice University was recognizing the leadership of Lone Star College and the community, and taking in the reason we moved it from here to city of Houston was for, uh, there is a big need for Houston to be on the map nationally for innovation. And it was a great day. Everybody was happy. But again, people from NASA, from Rice University, from Texas Exponential, from all the different companies where over a hundred people came. But the focus was that, again, appreciation for what Lone Star College is doing for the community and for city of Houston.
So Shaw put this together starting four years ago, five years?
Years ago, yes.
Yeah. This was Shaw's idea to put together an innovation conference, and we had it over at University Park, but he's kind of outgrown that. So, one of the things I'm most proud about our system is the individuals make things go here. And so, we can talk about the system while we want to, but there's individuals that make up the system, and whether it be faculty and the staff, or, you're gonna hear some more about awards we've won, but, uh, it, it can't happen unless people like Leanne lead this, or the aviation program, or some of the other things we've had, or the innovations conference, or energy and manufacturing, all the things that we're working on. There's just, uh, it takes individuals to take the lead in that and make it happen. So, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, Shaw. Thank you.
Rebecca, you ready? And faculty senate president, sorry, I left you off of that list, so. We've, we meet, don't forget, board, we meet every, every board, we meet for a couple of hours. And then there are also, you all, who all did you meet with today?
Uh, we met with, uh, general counsel, we met with you, we met with the vice chancellor.
Okay. So, they're talking, the faculty senate. You talk to whoever they want to talk to, so.
Good evening. Chairman Smith, chancellor head, and members of the board. As Dr. Head mentioned, this is my last month to serve as faculty senate president at SciFair, and as I've reflected on the last two years, the absolute best part of this role has been getting to know people better, both on my campus and across the system, and being in a position to see the amazing things faculty do to meet students where they are. I could be here all night giving you the examples of this, but I won't do that to any of us. But if you will allow me, I'm going to highlight two faculty-led initiatives that focus on the holistic achievement of student success. At Tom Ball, faculty see Model United Nations or Model UN as an international learning opportunity for students. It is linked to the college's initiative and incorporates those principles focused on student success. They have created great partnerships with student activities, honors, and other student clubs, but faculty have also been very, um, focused on their student recruitment. Tom Ball's Model UN has specifically decided to focus on promoting opportunities in international education for young women students for two reasons. Women are underrepresented in the disciplines of international education, and faculty feel that Model UN participation is a way of showing students potential academic pathways. Women are also underrepresented in international decision-making settings, and faculty feel the Model UN is an opportunity for young women to explore potential international career paths. The students involved include first generation in college, homeschool dual-credit students, and a broad diversity of ethnic backgrounds, as well as many international students. The head delegate for this year's participation at the National Model United Nations Conference in New York is Native American. Through Model UN, students are able to test their skills against some of the best university students in the world, thus improving self-esteem and confidence. The students are exposed to just how complex yet connected the world is, which empowers them as they move beyond our walls. In just the last two weeks, Tom Ball's Model UN Nation, sorry, Model United Nation delegation was honored as a distinguished delegation, putting them in the top twenty-five percent of the delegations at the conference. These women are living embodiments of student success and are a result of faculty looking beyond the classroom and grades and working to address the needs of the whole student. The second example I'd like to share with you is at SciFair, and it deals with helping students succeed in a completely different way, but equally important. The Empowerment Center at Lone Star College SciFair grew out of faculty, sorry, there we go, doing a campus assessment of how we are meeting or not meeting our students' needs. While many see SciFair as a more affluent area, those that are in the classroom are witnessing the real-life struggles of many of our students. Food insecurity is an issue at SciFair, and while a food pantry had been established by student life, it wasn't being used by many students. After an administration change, faculty broached the idea of taking it on, and Dr. Benny Lambert, the new vice president of student services at SciFair, said absolutely. However, faculty didn't just want to have a food pantry, they wanted a service area to address the multitude of needs students have. Faculty started visiting the other Lone Star College campuses, and ideas began to be drawn from what was seen. System Office paid for faculty and deans to go on site visits to other institutions such as Amarillo College, which had implemented something similar. In addition, I can still recall hearing the stories of a very bumpy van ride to Alamo College in San Antonio for another site visit. For those that were riding in the back, it was a bit rough. Eventually, ideas started coming together, and faculty approached the college leadership, specifically Dr. Keshfala, and asked that faculty be allowed to lead this endeavor. With her blessing and support, and that of System Office as well, faculty began to ardently pursue the creation of the Empowerment Center. Because of Hurricane Harvey, the food pantry, now called Food For Thought, opened prematurely and was based out of a spare office in a dean's suite simply because there was room available. An area had already been identified, but the transition was still taking place, and it just wasn't ready. However, Harvey said we had to be. But just a few months later, we celebrated the grand opening of the Empowerment Center. One of the most important aspects of the Empowerment Center is its location. Faculty were thoughtful in choosing this, and administration graciously allowed them to take over an area of offices that were in a less populated area and near an outside entrance. Faculty want to empower students and let them know everyone has gone through or will go through a rough patch, and asking for help is okay, but giving students a modicum of privacy while utilizing the Empowerment Center means they are less likely to feel a spotlight is on them. The Empowerment Center isn't just a food pantry. It contains a career closet, a second layer room, a room to meet with counselors, and a small unofficial library. Food For Thought has an area for people to pick up something to eat that day. No kitchen is needed. Then, students are allowed to shop throughout the rest of the food pantry and take what they need. The career closet enables students who have limited professional attire to find what they need for an upcoming job interview. In addition to clothes, there are shoes, ties, scarves, and jewelry, the things we all, if we honest, like to wear during those big moments. In addition to professional attire, outerwear and winter scarves, knitted by a SciFair faculty member, are available for students to take as well. The second layer room is where students go to get toiletries, washing detergent, cleaning supplies, and school supplies. An Empowerment Center faculty member has even put together go-bags for our homeless students, something they can take with them that will cede to their basic needs. The counselors at SciFair spend some of their office time in the Empowerment Center and are available when students need them. This is so important because as the volunteers talk to the students who visit the Empowerment Center, it is sometimes very evident that counseling is needed at that moment, and students are more likely to have that conversation in that same area rather than having to walk five minutes to a different part of the building. Guests at the Empowerment Center are invited to sit and read or take a book with them because faculty want to encourage education as part of the process. Available books include cookbooks, children's books, and books for adults. So, you might be curious as to how the Empowerment Center stays stocked all of the time. Employees are able to donate money through the giving campaign, and supplies can be bought through those funds, but most stock comes from the targeted donation drives. The Empowerment Center faculty make known what items are needed, and they work with classes that do service learning projects and student clubs who lead donation drives. The biggest contributor, though, are the campus competitions that occur almost monthly between two areas on campus. This month, the librarians are taking on the OTS technicians to see who can give the most. We have very competitive people at SciFair, so this type of donation drive is very successful. And it's good that it is. In the four months, the Empowerment Center was open in 2017, following Harvey, one hundred and eleven people were served. The grand opening was in spring 2018, and you can see that people began to hear about the Empowerment Center and utilize it more. For January and February of 2019 alone, three hundred and forty-six students were impacted through the result of a faculty initiative. With all of these visits, many volunteers are needed to work the Empowerment Center. Yes, faculty have led in this, but a wide gamut of people from across the campus volunteer, adjuncts, staff, librarians, counselors, deans, faculty. In fact, one hundred and two SciFair employees have been trained to work in the Empowerment Center. The Empowerment Center has been an eye-opening tool for many people. Faculty have become more aware of what is happening in their classrooms, and the Empowerment Center has also been a great opportunity for faculty to get more involved with the community. The SciFair community is excited about the Empowerment Center, and that is evident by the partnerships that have developed and are developing in donation given, but also as faculty explore future avenues to assist students. SciFair has always had a strong connection with the community, and that has only grown stronger in the past couple of years because of the Empowerment Center. The company, the community, wants to be part of everything we do to help those around us. In fact, the Empowerment Center video that was shared on social media through College Relations is one of the most-watched videos out of all SciFair videos shared. People are excited about what's happening in the Empowerment Center at SciFair. In speaking with faculty who work with the Empowerment Center, the most rewarding aspect to them are the students who come back. The students who have been helped want to immediately volunteer or bring in donations when they can. They want to give back. They also come back to give, to give status updates to the people who helped them. In fact, just recently, a student who had to drop out of school in the fall but had gotten assistance from the Empowerment Center came back to give an update. She specifically asked to speak to the faculty member who had assisted her, and she told that faculty member that she just wanted to come by and let her know that she is okay. Her family is okay. She is living in her car this semester, but she is finishing her certification program in May. Sometimes, all students need is that extra bit of care to get them to the next level in their lives. Faculty students, see students every day, and it is impossible to quantify how they help them without even knowing it. But for faculty to have an idea of reaching students in a better way, and in a way that will help sustain them for their lives, that's incredible. Whether it's showing a group of young women the power they have and the difference they can make in the world, or showing students who are struggling financially that they are not defined by their circumstances, however it is done, the impact is made. It's faculty who are on the front lines and leading them and, leading the charge and determining that student success is not defined by grades, it's defined by those, by what those students do at the end of their educational experience. Thank you. If I could, very quickly, the two faculty members who are the founding architects for the Empowerment Center are here, so I would like to recognize them, Dr. Hillary Harris and Professor Gail Marxhausen.
Rebecca, you want to tell people what you're doing on your sabbatical, what you're planning on doing on your sabbatical?
Yes, sir. Um, I am working on, as you may be familiar with, House Bill 2223, the corequisite bill, as we call it. I am working on putting together a guidebook for ways that ESOL can be fused as a corec with different disciplines, so history, speech, philosophy, and government.
Interesting.
Great.
Okay, board members, you now have the opportunity to tell us about activities, meetings, campus visits, and et cetera that you've had this past month. And I'll start to my left. Art, do you have any?
No, I'm good today.
You're good today? Okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank Dr. Arlo for the Innovation Conference. The, you get a chance to hang out with some very intelligent people, and I'll never know it all, but I get a chance there to hang out with the all that do know. So, and then, the other thing is, I said this last year, what I really get excited about is that there are a lot of startup companies, and those startup companies eventually become IPOs. So, I'm just letting you know, sometimes you miss it out on something, so, there's, and then, the other thing is, it was nice to see the president of, or the chancellor of Rice to take the second seat to, to Lone Star. And, and I really enjoyed that. And once again, thank you, and I, I will always enjoy them, and, and I, and I want to say that this puts Lone Star on the leading edge of most other schools. So, and the other thing is, we did have that break to where you could hear through, not so much through Sylvester Turner, but Amanda Edwards, she made the comment, and she, she's really excited because she thinks that Lone Star will probably be that beacon to get this area to not think so much of oil and gas and medical. And so, she was excited about that. Thank you.
All right. Good job. Thank you. Stone?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Dave?
I have nothing.
Okay, I have just a couple of items. Couple of weeks ago, a couple of days ago, I attended an activity in Acres Homes, and this was the, our opening of a workforce solutions office in that particular neighborhood. I think Quentin was there, was, several people were there, you know, from Lone Star. And our, the session, or the opening was very, very well attended. As most of you know, that area, the zip code of forty-four and eighty-eight is a pretty low-income zip code, and this is another opportunity for those individuals to have opportunities to gain new skills and to find new employment. And I am praying that the citizens of that community take advantage of those opportunities that are being brought to us. take advantage of those opportunities that are being brought to us. Secondly, along with other folks from Lone Star, and I can't think of all of them right now. Quentin was at this one, though I know for sure. The, uh, complete communities officially opened their office, uh, last week downtown at City Hall. Uh, a director was named, and they are ready to go to work. And I think there's 10 or 12 areas around the city that they have adopted to help make those communities complete. And I guess it's some of the things you and I take for granted. A lot of those neighborhoods do not have grocery stores, and they don't have a lot of stuff. And so the mayor's office and a lot of philanthropic agencies are doing a lot of things to make sure that you have a place to purchase groceries, there's a place to go to. There are banks, hospitals, and et cetera, right there in the neighborhoods for those people, uh, to, to take advantage of. Another activity that I enjoyed real, a lot was, and I had to miss one. I think I missed, well, I went to UP's scholarship. What do they call it? Scholarship appreciation. And all of the students that received scholarships who were present. And as usual, we have some re, real, unique individuals, you know, that are getting scholarships. And one of the ladies that I was really, really impressed with, she was a single mom. She was displaced during Hurricane Harvey. She lost her car, she lost her home, and she lost, I mean, she lost everything. And she was very appreciative of the Lone Star community stepping up to make sure that she was able to stay in school, and she stayed in school, and she's still in school. And she's, you know, is working hard to complete her degree. And she was there, very appreciative of, of getting that particular scholarship. Tomorrow, I'm going to a, another scholarship appreciation at the SciFair, and I'm looking forward, forward to having a good time there, too. And I mentioned earlier the stuff that we did at the legislature. So I've had a pretty busy month, but an enjoyable month, and I plan to continue the same. Any other, do you, you have anything? Okay. Okay, let's move on then to citizens' participation. Do we have any? We have one. Mr. Bergdorff, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am John Bergdorff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. I'm entitling tonight's talk what we did on our spring vacation. On Monday of spring break, about 1,000 members of the AFT from locals representing colleges and school districts across Texas met in Austin for a day of lobbying at the Capitol. Appointments had been made for small groups of school employees to meet with as many representatives and senators as we could to discuss issues of importance to students, teachers, and other employees at all levels of education. Seven members of AFT Lone Star College made the trip. We were able to spend some time visiting with two members of the House of Representatives, Armando Wally from the Aldine area, who serves on both the Public and Higher Education Committees, and Chris Turner from Grand Prairie, who chairs the House Higher Education Committee. I know that the chancellor, other administrators, and members of the board have been meeting with Texas legislators as well, and I'm sure our messages reinforced one another on many points. First and foremost, we talked, we spoke to both representatives about funding for community colleges. We are all aware of the decline in state support for higher education over the past three decades. This year, with high attention being given to improve funding for K-12 schools and also to curbing increases in property taxes, we wanted to share our concerns that other areas of the state budget should not be squeezed out, in particular, funding for community colleges. Although, although there are certainly going to be many changes before the session ends, at the time we talked to Mr. Turner, he thought that community colleges might see a 1% increase in funding. That is certainly better than a cut. We also spoke with both representatives about preserving the role of community colleges in providing developmental education. Recent sessions limited our ability to teach students with extremely weak backgrounds in math and English. The co-requisite model passed in 2017 attempts to accelerate students through more material than many students can reasonably absorb in a single semester. Current research on learning and brain development shows that growth of neurons can only happen so fast. Both representatives understand the at-risk students that we serve and the myriad of reasons they come to us with insufficient background. We were glad to share with them that early data is raising concerns, and we believe these issues are definitely on their radar screens. Another topic we addressed is the over-reliance among community colleges on underpaid adjunct faculty, a consequence of long-term budget cuts. Both representatives seemed surprised at how high a percentage of community college classes are taught by adjunct faculty and how low adjunct pay is. We wanted them to understand the negative impact this over-reliance has on both teachers and students. We also spoke with both representatives about how cuts in funding for employee health benefits through ERS have impacted faculty and staff. With reimbursement rates falling below Medicare levels, many employees have lost access to doctors and have experienced interruptions of medical services. Representative Turner told us that he had heard about this from other groups as well, since these changes impact all state employees. There are other topics we discussed, including a number related to our K-12 colleagues. We had developed a common list of issues that all of the locals were sharing with the legislators they met so that all the legislators could hear the same information. It is said that lawmaking is like making sausage. It is hard and messy work that isn't always pretty. Professional lobbyists promote the interests of those who can afford them. Our legislators need to hear the concerns of the rest of us, particularly those of us who care about education. Many of the people we met, legislators, legislative staff, tourists, and even lobbyists, thanked us for coming to make our voices heard. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, John. Okay, at this point, we will consider the consent agenda. Items 11 and 12 will be considered separately. Board members, do you have any item that you would like to have considered separately? Hearing none, I would like to have a motion and a second on items 1 through 10, 13, and 14. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Uh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt items, approve items, 1 through 10 and 13 and 14. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passed. Ms. Mott, are you going to talk about 11 and 12? First, let's have a motion on item number 11, a motion on the second.
So moved.
I second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we... Here, item R11.
I wanted Jennifer to talk about these particular items because of the amount of money involved, and it's dealing with our bookstore, so...
Yes, so the two items?
Let's do them, can we, can we do them separately, do we need to do them together?
Could I explain them together?
Well, we also need a motion to do them, number 12 then.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So we'll consider both 11 and 12 together. Thank you, proceed.
Okay, yes, so the first item, number 11, is for ratification. The second is for approval to do an amendment to our agreement with Barnes &amp; Noble, which is for our bookstores. What has happened here is every semester, students are able to purchase books at the bookstore using their financial aid. But the way this occurs is we provide a file and the information to Barnes &amp; Noble with the students and what their financial aid balances are. That way, the student's able to actually walk in and purchase the book against that balance. But the Department of Ed does not pay Barnes &amp; Noble, right? The financial aid funds ultimately get dispersed to Lone Star College, but these students have received their course materials from Barnes &amp; Noble. So Barnes &amp; Noble sends Lone Star College an invoice for those materials, which we then pay. So when this past spring came around, that's when we realized that authority for this expenditure was not included in the contract that this board approved this prior summer with Barnes &amp; Noble, just to make this payment. So that's why we did make the payment to Barnes &amp; Noble for the spring semester. That's why item 11 is a ratification of that payment. And then item 12 is an amendment to provide this expenditure. Now, the reason it's so much is because the Barnes &amp; Noble contract, it's for a five-year period with an option to extend another five years. So we did an amount to hopefully last the entire potential 10-year period. So it's, and we've been doing about roughly $5 million a semester potentially. It varies, but that's what these items are for.
Well, we really appreciate the work that your staff do, making sure that we do everything according to the letter of the law. Appreciate that.
So if we didn't do this, then we would have, if this is not approved, then we have to come back in after every enrollment period and get approval for the expenditure?
Yeah, for every semester, we would want approval prior to the semester.
Right.
Can I ask a question? I understand the arrangement. Is there any thought, I mean, five and 10 years is a long time. Is there any consideration as to the trend to go to online textbooks? And whether physical textbooks will, at some point during this five- or 10-year period, not be the thing to have? I mean, I'm just curious.
Um, I would think that just might be a separate consideration because it would still be purchasing course materials, even if they're e-materials through, if it's done through Barnes &amp; Noble off of the student's financial aid. The, the financial arrangement to pay Barnes &amp; Noble, I expect, would be similar.
Okay.
We are taking a look at online. We actually have, uh, an exploration. What's the name of?
Well, I used to be a Barnes &amp; Noble subscriber, and I haven't done it in years because I do everything online.
Yeah, uh, we, we actually have some preliminary courses. Dwight's leading that, we've got several people involved in this. We were talking about it today, as a matter of fact, so we are taking a look at it. Still, though, some of it's going to come through Barnes &amp; Noble, but yes, online, yes, we are.
So is there an out on this contract? I mean, is there a cancel leasing clause?
Yes. The, the, what's the out on the contract?
I don't remember.
It's, there's 180 days or something like that.
Okay, I mean, as long as there's one there, I, I believe you. Mario will correct.
Well, part of the problem we had when these big contracts, these big mega-contracts is they, they want a five-year deal, so because of the investment that they have to put into it, but we always put those outs in the contracts, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, vote by...
Take the vote separately.
Do the votes separately?
Well, you have a motion and a second for each one, so just...
All right. Okay, that's, at this point in time, let's, uh, vote on item number 11. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any contrary? At this point, let's take a vote on item number 12. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay, you can stay up, Ms. Mott.
First, I have something to present. It is from the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas, a certificate, certification of our investment policy presented to Lone Star College for developing an investment policy that meets the requirements of the Public Funds Investment Act. So we received this award, and I want to say huge thank you that our investment policy, which has to get reviewed and, uh, approved by this board annually, just happened, I think, last month. This investment policy is put together by the Treasury team. I want to mention Diana Garcia and Mary Beche, and they work closely also with the Office of General Counsel on our investment policy, and we submitted it this year and received this award for it.
Any of them available here tonight?
Uh, these two are not here tonight. But I just wanted to mention them as the Treasury team.
Well, tell them to say congratulations.
But, can they look at that?
Thank you.
Great job, proud of you.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled program. Uh, this month's financial report, and again, I have a presentation here for the summary, but of course, it is also in the board packet, which is a greater level of detail than what I've summarized here. So this is for financial statements for a month ending February 28th, 2019. First, our revenues as a percent of budget. We are at 292 million of revenues collected, which is 76.6%. And this is about a consistent collection for this point in time in prior fiscal years. Our expenditures as a percent of budget, we, our expenditures are at 167 million, or 45.3%. And this still, obviously, we always kind of have to take out last year, but otherwise, this still is looking to be trending low compared to prior fiscal years on our expenditures. But now going to our income statement and where we are forecasting variances. This month, unfortunately, we are now at a, forecasting a $9 million variance, negative variance in revenues. Last month, it was at $3 million. There is a $6 million increase in our negative variance in our tax revenues. And so we've really dug into this to find out what's going on here, and there's several things going on. First is, uh, there just has been an incorrect estimation of revenues coming off of new properties. We had gotten sort of inconsistent information from the appraisal districts about whether the value of new properties is included in the preliminary estimated values that we receive. We had been told at one point that they are not included, so we add them on top, and now we're being told that they are included. So we were sort of double-counting, double-estimating some revenues from new properties, so we needed to make that correction. On top of this, the other things that we're seeing happen is taxable value from exemptions and ceilings are increasing. And, I mean, just some of it is the population. As more people have some of these exemptions, that proportion is increasing. And finally, there's also been higher loss in value from protests. We call this hearing loss, this has increased. And there was also a law change where now a person, when they protest their value previously, they could only protest one year's worth of value. Now they can protest back three years. So we're seeing an increase in those hearing laws. So this combination of everything is what's causing us to now forecast 6 million below what we had budgeted to bring, to come in for tax revenues.
Now, how is that going to impact?
So, yeah, that's, so first, the expenditures, there's no significant change in expenditures for this month, so really, how that's going to impact us is here, right, where we're forecasting our cash reserves to end the year at. We are now forecasting 16.2%, which is 59.7 million, to end the year at. This, I mean, our minimum sort of goal has been 16%, so we're still above that. But this year's budget, we had budgeted to, to end the year at 17, so we are below that. So that is how this impacts that.
We were projecting 17.8 before this came in?
Yes, last month, we were projecting 17.8.
We were, we're in good shape, I mean, because of the way we've been budgeting, so...
Yes, so, yes, this is, um, definitely a negative impact to this, and we will continue to watch it. And I hope we're wrong.
Is there any way to forecast it in any way at all?
To forecast?
Forecast your negative variance based on what you just said? Your factors?
Well, so this is right now what, what we're seeing, the collections coming. This is what we're forecasting because, so the budget for taxes is 161 million.
Right.
And, um, the, the year-to-date actual that we've collected is 147 million. So we can see how much we've collected so far, and this is our estimate of how far short we think we're going to fall at the end of the year.
Well, if I understood you, one of the factors was, uh, you're not, taxes have been reduced by devaluation, is that correct?
Um, on the, from the protests, when there's a successful protest... On the, from the protests, when there's a successful protest.
Right.
Yes.
Are there any other trends there? For instance, let's say you've got an aging population. The aging population takes a, an exemption. You know, because over 65, you don't have to pay as much taxes, right? And that, can you see that as a trend?
Yeah, so that we're going to spend a lot more time trending going forward than, than we had previously, now that we're seeing a significant impact on, of.
Because I could see that being significant in areas of Ferris County, for sure.
Yes.
Probably Montgomery as well, given retirement, folks.
Yeah, so definitely with this type of forecasted variance in this, we're going to work on being able to more accurately forecast the impact of that going forward.
Having some kind of model, you think?
Yeah, or at least trending, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So that is the impact there on our monthly financial statements. And then moving to Fund 35, our Harvey Recovery Fund. There, we are at $35.7 million in expenditures, which is up from $31.4 last month. Of this, right, the majority of the spending at this point is definitely occurring at Kingwood, which is at $31.2 million, up from $26.9 last month. So that is where we are at on expenditures. And FEMA, where we are here, is, I showed the current estimated cost, what FEMA stage they're in compared to prior month, and you can see there's a small amount, there is some movement. If you look at Phase 7 and 8, we do have about $2.3 million that is moving through this. It has moved from C-Phase 7 to Phase 8. Now, and interesting to point out here is that this $2.3 million, it's close. It actually has been approved for payment by both FEMA and TIDM. We have not yet accepted the funds yet, though, because there is a portion of it that we are disagreeing with FEMA over. There's a piece that they denied reimbursement for because they said the costs weren't eligible, and we disagree, and we've submitted documentation showing why they are eligible, and we have not heard back yet on their review of that additional documentation. So in the meantime, we are waiting to accept the funds until that gets worked out. But hopefully, I'm hoping that means that we are close to getting another piece of this moving through. At least there was a little bit something to report in movement this month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any future agenda items that you would like to include? Hearing none, now the chair is adjourned.